Here we go. Good evening. And welcome to the September meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees. And we would like to welcome you all to a standing room only house. Thanks for being here this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Ms. Beriantos, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil?
Present.
Victor Garza?
Yeah.
James Mulkey?
Yeah.
Monique Presses?
Yeah.
John Massengo?
Yeah.
Mr. Bryant, we have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the prayer and the pledge, Mr. Toscano, please.
Yes, sir, trustees, we have Ms. Kopeck, Principal of Tradition Elementary School, along with Mr. Anderson, a choir teacher, and some fantastic students with some very interesting implements down there.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and the East Central School Board. We are honored to be here representing Tradition Elementary this evening. We have Mr. Anderson, our fine arts teacher, here with us, and also some of our amazing Tradition students and here with us this evening, who will be saying the prayer, the pledge, and also showcasing some African drumming and a traditional West African greeting song. So now for the prayer from Ms. Emma Davenport.
Please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for blessing and guiding our school district this year. We pray that you will continue to give strength to our school board, staff, and teachers. We thank all of them for their hard work, dedication, and love for us this year. Please bless them and their families to continue to lead our district. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, he may be seated.
Thank you, students. Good evening, School Board. Like Ms. Kopeck said, I'm Darrell Anderson, and I'm the fine arts teacher at Tradition Elementary. Last school year, the East Central Foundation awarded Tradition Elementary a Leroy Smith Teacher Mini Grant. This mini grant allowed all students at Tradition Elementary to participate in a day of interactive drumming led by David Cox of Rhythm Path. Tonight, the students will show off what they've learned by playing a traditional West African djembe drums and singing a West African song entitled Funga Olafia. The words in this song translate to mean "welcome to our village." This evening, we have the following students performing. In kindergarten, we have Noah Cisneros, Laney Longworth, Harper Mills, Treya Maldonado, Paisley Seaman, and A.J. Ortiz. In first grade, we have James Adams, Carson Seaman, McKendlin Serrano. In second grade, Brody Longworth, Dylan Dilla. In third grade, Hayden Mills, Nevea Cisneros, Emily Dilla, Jordan Dilla, and Riley Dilla. In fourth grade, we have Kendall Bachman and Madeline Serrano. And in fifth grade, we have Emma Davenport, Lexi Ferius, Brody Pfizer, Mordecai Johnson, Jessica Gonzalez, and Addie Hernandez. We hope you enjoy.
I got to watch them perform throughout the last couple of weeks, and you leave the room and you're chanting it with them, so it's awesome. I want to thank the students for their special performance today, but I also want to thank the parents because they, one, have these children that they're sharing with us, and, two, put in that extra time so that they could practice after school, so we appreciate that. So if you're a parent of one of these children, can you please stand so we can give you a round of applause as well? We thank you again for sharing them with us this evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and we have a small token that we would like to give each one of you to just say thank you for all that you do for not only Tradition, but the entire East Central School District.
I know who's gonna get this. That was great, guys. Fantastic.
Yes, it is. Blue feed, fat feed, sugar feed, keto all day.
Thank you, son.
Thanks.
Good job.
The presents were great.
We didn't practice this part very well. Practiced everything else. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, very good.
Great. You guys. You guys did a wonderful job of starting us, starting our meeting off in a great fashion. We appreciate you getting us pumped up for the rest of our meeting. It'll help us. You're doing a great job over there at Tradition, and it's obvious that you have some great leadership as well. I'm really glad that they're teaching y'all some rhythm, because I have to carry mine in a sack. So keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Great, great group of kids. All right, we have a couple of awards tonight, and if you don't mind staying with us for just a minute, as soon as we get through with our awards, I promise you we'll turn everybody loose so that you can go do homework or grade homework, and we'll get through with the rest of our meeting. So, Mr. Toscano, please, awards and awards and recognitions.
Yes, sir, I'd like to call our Director of MarCom, or Marketing and Communications, Mr. Brandon Oliver, to present three recognitions this evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to the Board of Trustees for recognizing some of our valuable district staff that have gone above and beyond. First, I would like to introduce, and I think he was standing outside, the Chief, Police Chief, George Dernowski. Thanks to his efforts and ties with Tech Dot, two crosswalks were installed on Stewart Road in an incredibly efficient and timely manner. In addition, Tech Dot absorbed sixty percent of the cost, so. Second, I would like to introduce the Director of Transportation Services, Don Jurick. Don, his department applied for and received a grant from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for nine hundred thousand dollars. East Central is the only school district to be awarded funds from this specific grant. It will be used to replace aging buses with environmental-friendly ones. We will be able to purchase over a two-year period, we'll be able to purchase twenty buses instead of twelve, so. And finally, I would like to introduce Nancy Britton and the Child Nutrition Department. Their outstanding work in being a standalone department enabled the district to participate in the CEP program, which gives our elementary students free breakfast, lunch, and end-of-day meals regardless of qualification. This makes sure that our children are cared for holistically and prepared for each day.
So we appreciate all of y'all being here this evening. It's great to see the kids start off our meeting, and it's also great to see our staff recognized for the things that they do that go above and beyond their normal jobs. The things that they bring into the district either for safety or additional resources for our district, for our kids. Thank you for all that you do. Thank your families for all that you do. And at this point, anybody else? We'd like to take a ten-minute recess. We'll reconvene at ten minutes to seven, and that'll give everybody a chance to go home and do homework or grade homework. Thank you. All right, we're gonna get started again. And before we start, I want to again thank y'all for being here this evening, and especially on a night that's not a normal School Board night. Most of us have been traveling Thursday up to Dallas, and so we needed to move our meeting. So again, we appreciate y'all accommodating that and being here. Our next agenda item is public comments. We have two individuals who've signed up to speak, Lisa Troggett and Ata Ayala. Okay. Come on.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lisa Troggett. I am a Gear Up Coordinator at East Central High School. East Central got the Gear Up Grant from UT Ipsy in two thousand seventeen. We follow the seventh graders at the time through one year post-high school. So right now, our babies are freshmen. Gear Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. And Gear Up has been around for a little over twenty years, serving thousands of students, underprivileged, low socioeconomic, usually students who are underrepresented. And we are just in every crevice of their life, and we love it. So we have a special celebration, because next week is National Gear Up Week, and we have a proclamation from Mayor Ron Nirenberg that Ata is going to read to you.
Whereas the East Central Independent School District will observe national gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. Gear Up Week, September twenty-third through twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, to celebrate their educational achievements and dedication. And whereas Gear Up is a federally funded competitive grant program designed to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas Gear Up serves low-income, minority, and disadvantaged students and their families from underserved communities who might be the first person in their family to go to college. And whereas for nearly two decades, the Gear Up Grant has been providing low-income, minority, and disadvantaged students with the support and resources they need to go to college, despite the challenges they may face in their community. And whereas the goal of the week-long event is to raise awareness of the positive impact of Gear Up and celebrate the success of the students, parents, staff, volunteers, partners, and communities. Now therefore, I, Ron Nirenberg, Mayor of the City of San Antonio, in recognition thereof, I hereby proclaim September twenty-third through twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, to be Gear Up Week.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's quite an accomplishment. Competitive grants, those are awesome things. Thank you for being here this evening. All right, those are our only public comments, so we will move on to Agenda Item Five, Superintendent's Reports. Item A, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, District and Campus Improvement Plans.
Sir, Mr. President, this time Ms. Hertz will provide a brief overview of our district and campus improvement plans. As you're aware, this past year, we worked really hard to create a new format for how we put those together in an effort to further improve our alignment from the board level down throughout the organization, so Ms. Hertz?
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Bryant, members of the board. I'm gonna show you how to access the website where all of this is so that, you know, in your leisure time, you can spend some time looking over all of it. If you go to the district website and click on Staff, and then go down to the Cs, and click on Curriculum Toolkit. You do have to sign in with your district Google account, which I know you all have. Okay, and so this is our Curriculum Toolkit where we have all of the things related to curriculum instruction and assessment. So there is a tab there called CG Process, and I know that you have heard that term quite a bit over the last few months. And on the first page of the toolkit, you will see our goal cascade that we have spoken with you about several times. We start with the board goal, going down through district goals, campus goals, department goals, sub-departments, all the way down to staff goals and student goals. So I'm gonna show you some examples of how you can see that cascade happening with our documents that we've created. So at the top, you will see there's a tab for the board, which is where your board goal is, for the district, where you'll see all of our documents as a district, for BOSS, Business Operations and Support Services, for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, for campuses, and for student and community engagement. So I'm just gonna kind of step you through what's on each of these tabs. And there's your board goal. So here for the district, you'll see those five different links. You'll see in a second, for every department, every campus, they're gonna have those same links to their own documents. So we started out doing a needs assessment last spring, and if you click on that, you will see a spreadsheet with lots of tabs on the bottom where you can see all of our scores, all of our data that we reviewed. Scores, also, let's see, here's more scores. Information about attendance, discipline, et cetera. So if you look through this at the, each campus and each department, they will have their own needs assessment where they have looked at all of the data, and there's all those spreadsheets where you can see everything that they examined to determine their annual results measures. And then, if you'll recall, in June, we brought to you the district annual results measures. So you've seen this before. Remember, we have the four priority areas. Under Priority One, we're looking at fidelity to our district systems, and also looking at professional development plans that are going to support student growth and achievement. Under Priority Two, we have a goal related to meeting eighty percent of our annual results measures and also retaining staff. Under Priority Three, increase the number of mutually beneficial partnerships and maintain ninety-five percent of our existing partnerships. And then Priority Four, having to do with asset management, budget alignment. So keep in mind those four priority areas and those kind of big themes, because you're gonna see those crop up in some of the sample ones that I'm gonna show you. Next, you'll see the improvement plan, which that actually is the the agenda item we have tonight to talk about our improvement plans. Let me shrink this down a little bit so you can see kind of how the whole thing looks, and that's a little bit too small. So when you look at these, you'll see the annual results measures are repeated, and then we also have our progress monitoring measures we'll be doing, our strategic activities, our timelines. We actually have specific people that are responsible for the different things and what our expected outcomes will be. Now you see some blanks there, because that's how we're going to be monitoring throughout the year. So we will look at what our results are at certain points in the year, look at our progress monitoring measures, and then based on that, we'll put what our status is and then what our next steps might need to be. You'll also see at the very end here, four columns. One for CCG and CSF, which is Critical Success Factors. A column for CBAS, which you're very familiar with. A column for High Reliability Organizations, and a column for ESF, Effective Schools Framework. So those are, if you'll recall, when we first started talking about this, we wanted to take all of the systems that we are responsible for and try to combine them into one so we can just have one document reflecting all of that. And so what we've done is for each of those measures, we have indicated with an X which of those systems it's attached to. Okay, next is the scorecard. Now the scorecard is the part that we will be posting on the district website for the public to see. The beginning part of each scorecard does have each of the priorities and kind of a description of what each represents. And then below that, you'll see, for each priority, we have our annual results measures, our progress monitoring measures, and our strategic activity. And you'll see those white boxes. That's where we're gonna be doing our signaling. So each quarter, we'll go in and mark those boxes to let you know kind of where we are in the process. Are we on track to meet it? Have we made some progress? Or if you see red, it's something that we have not done yet and we need to be working on. So there's nothing in there yet, because it's not the end of the first quarter yet. But quarterly, we will be meeting and marking with the color how we're doing on each of those areas. And again, this is the part, the scorecard is going to be posted on the district website for the public to be able to see, and they'll be able to see quarterly how we're doing on these things. And then the very last thing is the district organizer. And this really just gives you kind of a visual of all of that. You can see our four priority areas. You can see some of the activities and tasks related to that, some reflection questions for each area. So the way you read that is, East Central Independent School District is about providing an exceptional learning environment by optimizing teaching and learning environment, developing high-performing and engaged workforce. Cultivating inclusive and collaborative partnerships, and managing resources and fiscal operations. And then also attached to that is the same diagram, but underneath it, more specifically, what we're gonna be doing about each of those things. And we happen to have these posted in our classroom where we do all of our professional development so people can always look at the big picture of what we're working on right now. Okay, so that was showing you what each department and campus has, the components each of them have. But I do want to just kind of show you how each of them cascade from the district annual results measures. So just briefly, I'm gonna look over here at BOSS, and I'm gonna show you Transportation, their annual results measures. So you see again, we have the same four priority areas. Their top one there has to do with a hundred percent fidelity of implementation of the Department of Transportation Systems. Remember, that was a district goal, fidelity of systems. Then they do have some specific to their department. And then if you look down at Priority Two, you'll see also, they have the same goal the district did, that they will meet eighty percent of their annual results measures. They have a staff retention annual results measure, and then they have some other ones specific to their department. Down at Priority Three, they have the same one about the mutually beneficial partnerships like we had at the district level, and then some of their own. And then they also have one that matches the district with asset management, budget alignment, just like we did at the district level, plus some of their own. And you'll see that pattern really across all of these tabs. And you notice here, there is an overall, there's overall documents for the whole BOSS group, and then each sub-department has their own documents. Same way, if you look at CIA, we have our overall CIA plans, and then each sub-department. So let me show you the annual results measures here for the overall CIA plan. So you'll notice that these, they cascade from the district, but also things specific to the things they're working on. So we do have the one for a hundred percent fidelity of implementation of our systems. We have in the CIA plan a specific student growth goal and a specific student goal as far as being able to attain their grade level. And then we also have the same professional development goal that we have at the district level, and some things about curriculum writing and learning walks. So the eighty percent of learning walks indicate the implementation of a viable curriculum. That last one on Priority Area One, you're gonna see in just a second that that is reflected as a campus annual results measure also. And again, Priority Area Two matches with the district, meeting our annual results measures and also retaining staff. Priority Three, again with the mutually beneficial partnerships. And Priority Four, again with asset management and budget alignment. If you look at the SCE page, you'll see the overall student and community engagement. And then you'll also see each of the sub-departments. I'm gonna show you Athletics real quick. And again, you can see focusing on fidelity in Priority Area One, and also having a learning plan that's going to address student learning and outcomes. They also are going to work on meeting eighty percent of their annual results measures. They're gonna retain staff under Priority Two. Work on mutually beneficial partnerships in Priority Area Three. And work on asset management and budget alignment in Priority Four. Perfectly aligned with the district goals. And then lastly, I do want to show you a campus. So all of the campuses are listed here. And I'm gonna go to Sinclair. So you're gonna see a little more similarity on the campuses to the CIA one, because the campuses, again, they have all the same ones that everyone else has, but they also, each of them have an achievement goal and a growth goal for students. They also have a goal, remember, the CIA one had about the eighty percent of learning walks indicate implementation of a viable curriculum. The campuses also have annual results measures that cascade down from that. And so, and then you'll notice Priority Two- And so, and then you'll notice priority two, same, we've got retention of staff, meeting eighty percent of their goals, partnerships, and also working on budget alignment. So, I just wanted to show you how all of those, every department, every campus, has similar documents that you can view, but it's going to be very specific to their campus or department. But there's also a connection between all of them through the annual results measures and through those four priority areas. Again, this is accessible through our district website and go into the curriculum toolkit. You do have to use your district Google account to access all of this. However, again, the scorecards that every department and campus in the district will do every quarter, those will post on the district website for the public to view. And I would be happy to answer any questions. This has been a lot of work by a lot of people.
Questions, comments?
Very good, very good. So you remember the board workshop when we kind of talked about the concept?
Yep.
A lot of work after the last couple of months to get to this point, and they're operationalized. When you look at the actual plan for every campus and every department, the public could see the work that they're undertaking to achieve those goals. And so, we're very, very excited about that work and the effort behind it, and all the people in the room know what it took to get there and what it's going to do for our outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
All right, item B, 2019 State Accountability Report.
Jonathan Holbert, please.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the state accountability system. Now, we have our own community-based accountability system, which I would rather be spending the time talking to you about, because it's so much more comprehensive and has a much bigger perspective on everything that we're doing, but we're required to spend some time on the state system, so I'm going to give you some highlights from that system.
Thank you, Jonathan. No. No, I'm sure that you've prepared a riveting presentation for us, so please, go ahead.
As riveting as the topic deserves. So, our system has three domains that it looks at. The first one is about student achievement. The second one is school progress, and the third one is closing the gaps. And you'll notice a trend that, not to beat a dead horse, but it looks at STAR and STAR and more STAR, and a couple other measures along the way, but it's very dominated by the one-time test that the students take. In the first domain, it looks at that STAR test, and it averages together the students meeting the approaches, meets, and masters levels. And the way we usually talk about that is three different hurdles that the students have to clear. So all the kids at the masters hurdle have also cleared the approaches and the meets level. For our high school, it also looks at college career and military readiness and graduation rate. But for all the other campuses, it's only STAR. The second domain has two parts to it. The first one looks at progress on STAR, so it looks at how students did the prior year, and then how they did on this year, and it measures how much they increased. And then, the second section does a relative performance that I'll get into more some detail on in a second. That is the slide, and I've used this one every chance I get when talking about the system, because I think it's really amazing that TEA put this slide together. What I want you to notice is, the vertical axis on the left talks about student achievement, and then the horizontal one at the bottom is the percent of economically disadvantaged students. So, this slide is showing you that the state knows that the more economically disadvantaged students, the lower your scores will be on the STAR test. And so, they adjust your score in this measure based on how many students have free or reduced lunch at your campus. I just find that amazing. I just, I apologize, I just, I'm amazed that they would brazenly just train on that slide, and that that's part of their accountability system. Yes, well, I appreciate their transparency at least, right? Okay, so, the third and final domain has, it looks at different student groups. So, it looks at all students, and then it looks at race and ethnicities, students that qualify for free and reduced lunch that they call economically disadvantaged, students that are in special education or had been in special education recently, and students that are English learners, ELs, or students that don't natively speak English, or what they call monitored ELs, which are students over the last four years that have exited and have met the criteria to no longer be considered an English learner, but previously they were. And then finally, it looks at kids who have been in East Central for a few years, or kids that are new to our system that have come to it more recently. And it takes all of those groups, and it looks at these six different areas. STAR, meeting grade level. STAR, approaches, meets, and masters, so it repeats it again in that section. It looks at STAR growth again. And then, for our high school, it looks at graduation rate. For all the campuses, it looks at TLPAS, which looks at English proficiency for non-English speakers. And for our high school, it looks at college career and military ready. So it takes all of those things together, and it takes the highest of your domain one, two A and two B scores, and that's seventy percent of your final score, or they like to call it a grade. And the third domain is thirty percent of your final score. And if you're at a fifty-nine or lower, they rate you improvement required, and they give you a letter grade of an F. Now, I want to call your attention to that second domain with growth. Previously, up to this point, our K-three campuses would never receive a growth score because they don't have two years of scores. So, Oak Crest and Tradition, with the reconfiguration, did receive growth scores this year, and going forward, as K-five campuses, they will receive that growth score. And so, that kind of changes the whole system a little bit, and makes us now eligible to receive that score, which usually our growth is our highest of those three scores. And so, that increases the scores a little bit for those campuses. And you have in your packet, a copy of the district in each of the campus reports, and so it just lists a letter grade on the far right and a number grade to correspond with the overall score, and each of the subcategories there. So you can see, East Central as a district received a score of a seventy-seven, which is a C, and then you can see each of the subgroups. Each of those domains we just talked about. And then, I thought it would be interesting, I included, ECDC actually does get a rating. So obviously, with us closing the campus, it won't going forward, but we have to tie it to another campus. And for the last few years, we've tied it to Sinclair. And so, just in case something came up and somebody said, hey, did you know Sinclair had this rating? I wanted you guys just to be in the loop and to know that that is a campus that also was rated. It just mirrors Sinclair's rating overall. Are there any questions you guys have about our state accountability that I can answer?
But do you have any questions? There's a very, very thick report in your packet.
Right.
With lots and lots of details, and if you have insomnia, it's really good stuff.
So is there a way to, like, have TA rate our kids differently? I mean, that graph just really pisses me off.
Yeah, it's, I just, I just, yes, ma'am. I just, to me, the way I look at it is, you know, this is our principals, I love our principals, this is the kind of stuff that every day distracts them from their really important work they're trying to do, and they do a fantastic job of staying focused about always talking about kids and teachers and the important stuff. And so, you know, sometimes we just have to play within the rules that we're given, and so, what we try to do is take those cumbersome bureaucratic nonsensical things and turn them into things like the CG process that Taffy was just talking about. So, we try to look at it as, we're not going to get held down by their craziness and their ridiculous rules, but instead, we're just going to use that as a way to leverage and make our whole system better, and go beyond what they dreamed of. And whenever we talk about it, they always say, you guys are doing exactly what we would hope people would do with it. So, I just, they don't seem to make it clear that that's what they want, but I keep bringing it back to them and saying, hey, just so you know, this is what we're doing with it, and they said, keep going. So, even they recognize, I think, that we're doing good things with it, so.
I know we're doing great here, we're doing wonderful things, great things, we're growing our kids, and we see everything that's.
No, don't I? Or maybe not. Anyways, I was just curious, in your wheelhouse, in your profession, if we took away that scale, that sliding scale, the way they flip it and make it harmful to us and helpful, what would you say, or how would you say our campuses are performing? We wouldn't be getting Fs and Ds if we took that ridiculous.
What's remarkable. I'm sorry.
If we took that ridiculous, right? So we're more at a Bs and Cs really on our campuses, or?
What's remarkable about that slide is that if you look at our campuses, even if they have in the high seventy, like seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent, it doesn't help their rating at all. So, if roughly four out of five kids on your campus get free or reduced lunch, it didn't help any of our campuses at that rate. You had to be higher than that to get, I think, one or two of our campuses got a single point for having eighty-four, eighty-five percent of our kids that were economically disadvantaged. And so, it's amazing to me, the kind of, the way the system works. And again, it's just something, we try to just make sure we don't get distracted by these crazy, crazy rules and crazy things, and we're just, we're just trying to take in the information as one more data source, one more piece of information, put it in its rightful place, be aware that the community will see this, and that this is what they're likely to see in the news and the TV, and we want to, we want to make sure we're just doing great things for our kids and our community, so.
Yeah. That's what's frustrating, that's what the, you know, the media blows that up so big, oh, this school got an F, you know? And we, we don't have a way to combat against what they're seeing, you know? They automatically see the public, and of course, the media just plays on it, and plays on it, plays on it, and they see the letter F, and they think that we're all doing horrible, when in reality, we know, I wish there was just a way we can, could convey. I know we do that through all of our, you know, meetings like this, where parents are able to come and see what we're doing, and we are doing good things, but it's just a shame that, you know, there's no way to combat that, you know, with some, something, I don't know. I'm going to do that, too. Something else to work on, it's frustrating, you know?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, purchasing cooperatives.
Trustees, this is something we'll bring to you every year, just so that you're aware. Purchasing cooperatives and shared service agreements are a way for school districts to leverage purchasing power, to improve the value of the products and services that we can provide for our students in the district. And many of these cooperatives, we've been a member of for many, many years, and some more recently. But this is the list of either interlocal agreements or purchasing cooperatives that the district is a part of, and just as a generalization, when essentially, goods and services are procured, if they're, if they are awarded a contract through any of these, then they've been through the vetting process, and they're assuring that it's a good value, and it's up to us to take a look at those and compare value from cooperative to cooperative, and secure the best value for the district. It's one way that we can procure goods and services, and so, still provides tremendous, a tool that provides tremendous leverage for the district to get good value for the things that we procure. So, anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Matt Morgan is here as well, this is his wheelhouse, and if you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer those, but there's no action that you guys need to take, I just, you know, we wanted you guys to be aware annually of those that we're members of.
Quick question on the Northeast ISD, the ISD interlocal agreement, does that just partner with, obviously, Northeast against a better, bigger bank or?
So, this would, so it does, it allows us to piggyback on, with their board resolution, allows us to piggyback on some of the things that they've went to market on and secured a good value on, if we so chose. That happens to be one that we brought on this past year because of a partnership with UT, is that correct? Which particular partnership was that one for?
For the GEAR Up grant.
Yeah.
It allows to utilize, they had procured it, and so, in July, we all approved the interlocal agreement in Northeast, and so, a lot of people, they're being.
And that was in reference to the UT GEAR Up grant, which you saw spoken about today,
Okay. Item D, personnel report.
This month's report, trustees, is in your miscellaneous packet, and there's not much activity there, and as is always the case, be happy to provide additional information on any of the items in that report, but there's also attached to that report, a couple of handouts, front and back, that I wanted to call your attention to, that are related to personnel. As the board knows, one of the challenges that we've been trying to overcome in recent years is staffing for substitutes. And fill rates have been a challenge, and in recent years, the board has approved an increase in daily rate for substitutes. We've done several things to improve the number of trainings, a frequency of training, so that we can get more subs in and onboarding, and in classrooms. We've also worked across all campuses to make consistent what subs would experience each and every day, so that the things that were provided for substitutes in a third-grade classroom to orient their day would be the same in a high school classroom. So, in other words, the working conditions for substitutes, we've tried to standardize and make optimal. Despite all of those efforts, we've only been able to get a fill rate of about seventy-nine percent, and that's not acceptable. And so, in the last couple of years, we've been looking at other options. In the better part of, from last spring to now, I've asked staff to do some research on companies that provide staffing, that their focus is on helping school districts provide staffing for substitutes. And we landed on a company called ESS. They've had a national presence for quite some time, but more recently in the state of Texas. There are several school districts that have been using their services in recent years, and there's a couple of examples of some documents from Frisco ISD that went out to their community, as well as a recommendation from Abilene ISD. But in addition to that, we spoke with several districts, including Denton, Salina, Roy City. And so, what they're finding is that this company's able to come in, and essentially, what they'll do is, they'll take over all of your staffing for substitutes. They'll do recruiting, marketing, training, onboarding, they'll, they'll put an onsite coordinator who is responsible for all of that. It removes all the soft costs and staffing demands of us doing that with campus secretaries and that sort of thing. They also have the ability to do some things that we cannot. They'll provide a 401K, they'll provide some health insurance, supplemental insurance for these employees, they can also incentivize them, they can give them gift cards, bonuses. So for example, secondary schools are much harder to get substitutes for than elementary schools. As the year wears on, it's harder to staff subs towards the end of the year as it is earlier in the year. Some campuses are more difficult to staff with subs than others. So this company would be able to incentivize people to take jobs in those, in those more, less, less popular areas, for example. The other thing is, we currently have about two-hundred-and-eighty-two subs in our pool, and that's getting us a seventy-nine percent fill rate. In order to get ninety percent plus, we need to almost double that. And despite all of our efforts, we've got two-hundred-and-seventy-nine, which is a larger number in our pool than we've had, but it's not enough. And so, we feel like it's time for us to consider moving in this direction. When you do a cost analysis, which is also in, on the back of the Abilene recommendation, if you'll look at that with me for a second, you look at the column that says ESS Partnership, and that's next to the column that says Current Program. We spend about one-point-three million dollars a year in substitute, everything associated with substitutes. By partnering with ESS and moving to a ninety percent or better fill rate from seventy-nine percent, the bottom line looks like it's in the neighborhood of about eighty-one thousand dollars in addition. So it's a very minimal cost for what they're able to provide. The contract is a yearly contract, if they don't deliver, we could, we could back out, but with the, what we've done to vet it, and there's several people in the room that have been really involved in this, Avette and Darlene and Stevie and Judy, been very involved in doing their due diligence and making sure that we were bringing on a good partner. And so, basically, at this point, board action is not required. ESS has been awarded contracts from three different cooperatives, we happen to be a member of all three of those, and what we And what we hope to do is be able to enter into a, a contract with these folks and, and over the next couple of months, begin that transition process is what we would like to consider. And I can tell you by talking to, to campus staff, leadership, over the last few months about this, they're super excited and anticipating the improvements that this could bring. This is also part of a strategy that's coupled with what the board approved earlier this year to add to the buyout for days that employees have at retirement. And we felt like as a board that that was an incentive to get people to come to work every day and to minimize their use of discretionary leave. And so we feel like by having people out less, by partnering with a company that can get subs to fill more, that in the end, we're going to get a better quality in front of kids every day. It is a significant impact on a campus when a sub is not, when a, when a teacher is not there. If a sub is not filled, it takes two to three teachers at a secondary campus to fill that. So it's, it's a big issue, it's a big challenge that we have not been able to solve and we know that we need to get over ninety percent fill rates. And, and this is a problem that is common in every district across the land, and this is the best solution that we've come across. And so we feel like it's worth giving a try, and that's what staff's recommending, so. In the upcoming months, I'll be providing you guys with more updates and of course, between now and, and in the next couple of months, if you have any questions, comments, feedback, recommendations, we'd certainly consider those before we move forward. But I just wanted to let you guys know that we've been about four to six months into this process and, and feel like the team has a, has reached consensus on this recommendation and, and feel like it's a, it's a good option for us to give it a go.
Any questions? All right. Mr. Toscano will keep us updated and if you have any questions as we move forward, please get in touch with him. Item E, construction update.
Yes, sir. Trustees, Mr. Selby is going to provide the board with an update and Carlos Constantino from LPA is with us as well. And we're really excited about this one because this is the one that's at the close of the program. And so what I've asked Carlos and Mr. Selby to do is work together to kind of bring back some of the original elements that, that the facility study committee brought forward for your consideration, that was part of the bond program. And kind of show in a high level way, these are the things that we identified, that the, that the community supported, and then show the result. And so the intent here is to bring the board kind of full circle. But my intent is to use this as a resource to get back out into the community and into our local municipalities, of course, and, and, and other campus groups, parent groups, et cetera, and just kind of let them know that we, we've accomplished what they wanted us to accomplish. And so, without further ado, Mr. Selby.
Mr. Toscano, trustees, it is quite a pleasure to tell you that this is going to be the last of the riveting presentations on the bond.
Oh darn.
It's also my last chance to use this little pointer that, oh man, it stopped working. There it is. What's wrong with this? Dang, Judy. My last chance to make Judy nauseous, but anyway. Through a, a series of, of, of efforts through by district staff, working with the board, LPA and, and then ultimately the facility study committee, we were able to identify these five areas in which we felt that there were needs that needed to be addressed in the area of facilities. We felt like early childhood education really was the foundation for lifelong learning and that we needed to move those programs to the home campuses. We've realized that many of our elementary schools, in particular John Glenn, Harmony, Pecan Valley, Salado and Sinclair were aging and needed some attention. The shifting demographics clearly showed that more and more of our growth was taking place in the north part of the district and that we had no campuses north of Highway eighty-seven, that that needed to be addressed. Our fine arts programs were growing and were just really stellar programs, but the facility needs were, were lacking. And then finally, that whatever we did, we needed to make sure that there was equal opportunity for all of our kids and then through facilities as well as all other parts of programs that we offer them. So to the resolution or the, the solutions for these that we came up with were one, to build a new pre-K through fifth grade elementary school in the northern part of the district, repurpose John Glenn for the high school as an annex for programs there. New pre-kender and kender classrooms at Harmony, Pecan Valley and Sinclair. New additions at Salado and overall increase our student capacity by around a thousand students. And this would help address obviously the changing demographics along with many of the other things we identified. We, we felt like also we needed new facilities for the performing arts center to be built, so that our fine arts program could continue to flourish. Renovation of the south campus to provide additional facilities for dance, cheer and athletics. And certainly to bring those aging facilities up to a current standard, we needed dramatic renovations at Harmony, Pecan Valley, Salado, Sinclair, which would include, of course, the air conditioning of the gyms, improvements to libraries and administration areas. All of these needed to be done in, in conjunction with bringing all of these facilities up to the current Americans with Disability Act compliance and improving connectivity and technology. Then finally, we wanted to make sure that we had safer environments for an energy efficiency in our facilities and including better pickup and drop off areas at Pecan Valley, Sinclair code compliance. And as I already mentioned, the air conditioning of the gyms at the elementary and intermediate school. And then of course, during any of these renovations, make sure we're using sustainable energy and, and efficiency. So let's see how we brought, what, how this translates into what we actually did. And we did build that new pre-kender through fifth grade campus in the north end of the district, and that was Tradition Elementary School. Extremely proud of this facility, just going to show it off with some really nice photographs that I did not take.
We can tell.
We can thank LPA for these. But it's really a, a tremendous campus and one that we can all be proud of for many, many years. Libraries are just unbelievable in what, what LPA, LPA designed and what we were able to build. And then at John Glenn, we didn't do a total renovation there, but we did do a number of things to improve the, the facilities at that. We did observe that we had a number of aging issues and we needed more parking. Plumbing was a major issue, especially in that north wing, and HVAC and code compliance were issues. So what we ended up doing was demolishing the north wings, the oldest part of the campus, and we're, we removing the equipment that was beginning to be out of date or repurposed the, the newer equipment at other campuses. Converted many of our classrooms for specialized use. Have additional classrooms for the high school to add to its capacity. We added parking in that what was area just outside of, between where the north wing and the tennis courts are. And we converted the gym for specialized use right now for the, as a shop class and converted the library into a, a general purpose use facility. And show off the, of course, you want to show off the, the shop class, that's pretty nice compared to what it was. We also began to, to look at how do we translate our needs for the fine arts and athletics programs and either additions or renovations. And we did that through Performing Arts Center. We renovated the old band hall areas or the, actually the, some of the band hall into, to additional practice rooms, study the art practice rooms. Providing additional space for them where once was choir and drama. And very pleased with how those came out. South campus, of course, we modernized the gym for dance and cheer, improving the, the locker and the shower, shower areas there, as well as the areas where the gym was, or is. South campus, we renovated Ed Hall into freshman locker rooms for athletics and field house renovations were done as well. But the most, obviously, the most obvious thing that we did was build the Gary Patterson Performing Arts Center. And as we all know, that's, it's turned into quite the gem for us. We continued to move on and the next major phase of the bond was looking at those elementary schools that, and what the needs were there. And we, we saw that there was a need for improving all of those areas and so what we did was we renovated all of those existing facilities with major, almost total renovation of the interior. We added the pre-K kender wings and, which provided additional capacity for each of those campuses and resulting at Harmony and this addition and pre-kender, kender playground area. Beautiful library, quite impressive, I think. And the kids seemed to like it. Same thing over at Pecan Valley, it's kind of a similar story. We went in and renovated all of the existing facilities. We also, this was one of the areas where we had some concerns about parent pickup and, and drop off. At one time, we thought about adding another exit, but as we studied that further, we found that that was going to actually create more problems than it solved just because of the way South Cross is configured and the median that was there. So we reconfigured the access in and out and, and made that much more efficient and we believe safer for the parent pickup and drop off as well. So we did add the pre-kender wing over there and once again, a very nice little pre-kender playground, play area. We renovated the classrooms, we made that campus that was designed for open, open classroom concept into something that was met current code compliance, ADA issues. But more importantly, I, or just as important, we made it functional and, and something that would be current standards for that, that campus. Did air condition the gym. Moving on to Salado, same type of thing. We, we certainly looked at all the aging facilities there and came up with new additions to get rid of the, the portables that were being used as much as possible. We also did total renovations of wing A, B and C. Did significant renovations in D and, and the cafeteria. So this is what used to be the, the band hall and dressing rooms is now the fine arts and computer lab area. We did air condition the gym over there and added on these new facilities to the, to that area. Renovated the classrooms in the existing areas. At Sinclair, once again, we, we looked at those facilities, began to determine that there needed to be significant changes there. If you recall, that wasn't an open classroom concept, but it was something along that line. We also had major issues with the parent pickup and drop off, so we added the, the lane that wrapped around the back of the school that has significantly helped with that. And we did build the new pre-kender addition with playground area. Beautiful library, remember that was all open right in the middle of school, now it's a, it's a separate library, which is, meets any current standards. Once again, the kids seem to like that. You know, in looking at this, this program, we, we did look at all the things, I think it's important for us to notice that out of the goals that we had, and this isn't listed up there for you, but I wrote them down just so I didn't forget something, if I can find my notes. We did meet the goals that we set for ourselves in this bond issue. What we promised the voters we would do, we've done. We, we have a home campus for all of our pre-K and kender facilities. We have a new elementary school that was going to help address growth in the north part of the district. We have a high school facilities that expand their capacity for, for students through the John Glenn Annex. We have modernization of the existing facilities for dance, band, cheer and athletics. We have also added a new performing arts center that's going to help not only the, the fine arts programs at the high school, but it's something that's available to the entire district and the community. We've modernized all of our elementary schools that were older in, in years. And I wish we could do that with me, but we can only do that with buildings, but we did.
Only takes money.
There's only so much money. And then we have truly provided an equal opportunity through improvements to these facilities for not only our students now, but all into the future. And I think that's really significant. We did this by doing, having a minimal impact on the tax rate. We estimated very conservatively that it would be a sixteen to seventeen cent increase. And as it turned out, back in two thousand and sixteen, before the bond, we had a interest in sinking rate, which is what you use to pay for the bonds of point two-two-five. In nineteen twenty, the board adopted a INS tax rate of point two-four. So, and of course, this is a result of both property values going up, but also with better values than what we anticipated as far as interest rates in the bonds that we sold. But it's really a very minimal impact on the taxpayer and they're getting a lot for their bang for their buck. Last thing, just thank you, I want to thank the, the superintendent and the board of trustees for their vision and their leadership in this because they started this process well before anybody had a, a thought about it. We started this back in two thousand and fifteen, actually, and even before that. But truly began earnest planning on this, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, before the bond ever went to the voters. We included, through the help of LPA and through working with the board, with district staff and through the community, through the community study, facility study committee and through just reaching out to the community, were able to really help develop, I think, an exceptional bond program. I do want to thank LPA for all that they've done in this, they've really played a critical role in helping us put the information together that was needed, not only for us, but for the community. I want to thank the campus administration, I know I've done this at almost all of my meetings, but it's really phenomenal how well these programs worked, these construction programs worked, where we had construction going on while those kids were going on. And the way that was successful is the exception, not the rule, I just want you to understand. And that's part of why the Joris team enjoyed working with y'all so much, because it worked. And I want to thank y'all one last time for that. And then finally, I want to thank the patrons, the people of East Central, because they voted this in and without them, it wouldn't have happened. So I know that I kind of monopolize this, Carlos is just standing here, if there's needs to add anything, if you have anything you want to add to that.
You did perfectly well. So I will, I will express the same with, with Jim. I can't say enough as far as the support and the patience that the, all the principals in the elementary schools and the high school had. That's half the battle, I mean, I've been doing this a long time. Half the battle is being able to have the districts and personnel to work with you. And so it is, it was a blessing to have them onboard, they were always helpful, they were patient and so it was truly, truly a blessing to have them. And so we, we really had a good time, normally it's pretty difficult, on phases like, we had actually twenty phases total, twenty-five phases total. And so we think we did a, a good job and we're hoping that the community and the district really is excited about this. So we really thank you all on the board, Mr. Toscano, for that opportunity, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was fun.
Do you want to do the video on the pack?
Yeah, show that.
So our office, generally, we went through. So our office generally went through and did a video to showcase the Performing Arts Center. I think we've talked about renovations, I think the Performing Arts Center is a jewel for y'all. I think it's a game changer for y'all in the district, especially when every single kid, child, you go to the internet, it's already on, it's already there, there you go. And so we're excited that every single student will be able to experience the Performing Arts Center. So this is a video that we did, that we did, that we're going to be able to showcase for this whole district.
I think the story of this building really started a long time ago, when this school district was not performing very well in vocal, theatrical competitions, and that goes to see when the superintendent's brain-
I think your team, Gary Patterson came to me, he was the superintendent at that time, and he had a vision. He said, "I've been wanting to see one act play, and I want to see more choir than bands." And he started the discussion of the vision, man.
I think the design process really began with community involvement. The first thing that we had to understand as a design firm was where this community was starting from. East Central School District is a strong district east of San Antonio that had a burgeoning fine arts program and no performing arts center in its entire district. This facility has served the entire community, not just the high school campus on which it was located.
Pretty much the minute we moved into the building in late November, my students all of a sudden realized that they were partaking in a very serious art form. It elevated their perceptions of theater and choir. They all of a sudden were dreaming of new possibilities, new shows we could do, and they were much more excited to explore the technical aspects of our art form. I knew that when we started the process for this building, I did not want a black box. I think they're outdated, I think black is depressing, and it didn't leave much room for creativity. So I told Better Rico from day one, "I want a beautiful room. I want a space to exist in that inspires us artistically. The white walls, and we can paint with colored light, and the ability to see out, and let the community see the amount of work that goes into what we do. That really is everything I dreamed it would be for us to happen."
Maggie's Room, formerly known as the Rehearsal Room, or as the White Box, is what we found to be the real heart of this project. We call the room Maggie's Room, because Maggie brought the idea to us to have a room like that. This is the kind of room that doesn't exist in any other facility at the high school level or really anywhere. Instead of a black box, it's a white box, it's a daylight room, onto which they can paint whatever kind of environment they would like. It's extremely useful for them, it's a full-scale stage itself, and what that allows for them to have is a competitive advantage over other school districts, because they can tape off full rehearsals while production is happening on stage.
My hope is that we can begin to do more collaborative performances than we do today, and choir, and dancing theater, doing huge musicals with large moving set pieces running in and out, and giving the community of East Central an experience closer to that of a Broadway show. We have a community that doesn't really get to experience that, we have a very low socioeconomic student base, so I want to be able to bring the students in, have them experience this art form, tell them these stories, and build those relationships across the board through all of the performing arts organizations.
I'm seeing the response of families, and I've seen response to kids in the faculty and the staff here. It's very clear to the community, this building has elevated our community.
I think that's it.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, Carlos. Don't leave, guys, don't leave, guys. Wait a minute, come back. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. First off, LPA, partners, people that we like dealing with. We've had many discussions over the years about function over form. It's not easy for an architect to do, because you guys like the form, but you've taken that concept here and you've done an exceptional job with it. What we see for our kids now, as to what they had a few years ago, is just light-years difference. At the campuses, inside those campuses, the opportunities that kids now have for learning and teachers for teaching is tremendous. It couldn't be any better. And it's hard to believe that a couple of years ago, we were on the stage in the cafeteria. And, yeah.
We actually renovated it like two years or three years before that.
Exactly, and, and we thought we were doing great, you know, and then all of a sudden, we realized our kids are going to Laverne to, to practice for a one-act play, and they really, they, they get to the one-act play, and the, the equipment there, they, they don't know how to use, because they've never seen it before. So the opportunities for our kids were, were just unimaginable. I cannot express to you and Mark the, the partnership aspect of that. We started with the concept, LPA took that, met with our staff, and dramatically changed that initial concept. What came out of that didn't almost look like what went into it. The time that you spent with our staff to change things, to make them better for us and for our students, was just unimaginable, and, and we can never thank you enough for that. So please convey our best wishes to Mark for that. Mr. Selby, there aren't enough words to thank you for your work during this project. The way you spearheaded this project, the way you doggedly kept after everybody to make sure that they did the right thing for what you just called "our kids." I, I know that you've been around here for a while, but to hear somebody who doesn't even live in our community say "our kids" makes me feel great about this school district, and it makes me feel great about the commitment that you've had to this school district over the years. Coming back out of retirement to lead this project, to spearhead this project, to make sure that everything was done the right way. I can imagine you out on the job site kicking forms out because they weren't done right. That's just a picture that I have in my mind. But to keep on people, to make sure that they did the right thing and, and got the job done, was unbelievable. Some of the things I see in here, the advanced manufacturing facility at the John Glenn Annex. Toyota just announced almost a four-hundred-million-dollar expansion. We have some of Toyota's equipments in that building, equipment in that building. And that's what's going to make our kids successful, those kind of things, being able to do that.
Exactly, exactly. And I was just going to, absolutely, amen to that. But also, what I was thinking about is how the, the committees that came together and, and worked really hard to, to, to share what they wanted too, and the, and so as a result of all of this, I think our communities are, are just, see, this is just such an awesome thing, and, and just a wonderful way for the community to be proud of it too, so I thank you for them too.
Yes, just to add, thank you for your patience. I know you have never, I've never seen you lose your cool, maybe, I have never seen that, but you very, I really appreciate you.
I've absorbed a couple of times.
Appreciate your partnership as well. I'm, I'm proud to be EC Hornet. It's, it's amazing how our district has evolved since I've been here, and it's like, wow, this is our district. This is amazing, like, we, like, so, thank you.
Thank you both.
Need to work on your camera work, though.
Thank you so much.
Award-winning.
And Mr. Shelby, thank you also for keeping the board updated on a monthly basis on how the progress was going, and, and I know we asked pretty difficult questions, but you was able to, to rope-a-dope and keep us going, keep us going, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
If those photos were professionally done, we'll be doing the same thing for the renovations, because every campus deserves that, we'll be going out there sharing that with other school districts as far as what East Central is all about, so we're excited about that.
I think the plan is for them to update a lot of these photos. This isn't the final version of the presentation, but we wanted to go ahead and get that before you and begin to bring closure to the program.
Very good. Jim, Jim, I have referred a couple of people to you for your photography skills. Thank you, gentlemen, what a wonderful job, thank you. It's hard to believe that that was two thousand sixteen bond issue, but wow. Thank you, Carlos, tell Mark hello for us, we appreciate y'all. All right, item F, upcoming events.
Couple of items in your calendars, September, October, I wanted to point out. Tass- Tazby Convention is this upcoming weekend. Those of you who registered for that, you've got a manila folder in your packet there that has your itinerary and other information about the upcoming convention. On the twenty-seventh, there's a student holiday, staff will be at work doing some professional development. In October, we have another student holiday, staff development on October fourth. And then everybody's off on Columbus Day, the fourteenth of October. Homecoming week, the week of the fourteenth, homecoming football game against New Braunfels Canyon on the eighteenth. Our regular, regularly scheduled board meeting on the seventeenth of next month is scheduled for five-thirty. On the twenty-first is another student holiday and staff development. One other thing that's attached there, or should be in your folder, is a one-page document that says District Daily Counts. I did want to point out, you know, that Mr. Selby did a great job reviewing all of the aspects of the bond program, but one of the major strategies in that bond program was to provide early childhood centers, early childhood pre-K access to all communities, neighborhoods. And in doing so, along the way, we had a partnership, we engaged in a partnership with Pre-K for S.A. in an effort to elevate our program, to make sure that we were providing our four-year-old children with the very best that is available. And that's the promise we made to the community, and so this fall was the first year that we opened the doors to those pre-K centers for four-year-olds. And I'm proud to report that as of today, our pre-K enrollment is at four hundred and fifty-five students, and when I pulled up eighteen, nineteen, September sixteenth counts, there were two hundred and ninety-one. So we have a significant increase in four-year-old enrollment in our district, very proud of that.
So that would seem to let us know that some of our goals were met during the, during the bond.
Yes, sir.
Kids are back home.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on, our action agenda, action agenda item, item A, reorganization of Board of Trustee Officers. This is an opportunity for us to reorganize the board if we so choose.
Mr. President, I recommend the following slate of officers. John Massengill, President. Steve Bryant, Vice President. Claudia Valiantos, Secretary. I nominate that slate of offices.
All right, we have a slate of officers nominated by Mr. Mulkey, John for President, myself for Vice President, Claudia for Secretary. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
No.
If not, sure will entertain a motion to accept this list of nominations by acclamation.
Go move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a new slate of officers. John Massengill is President. I will move to the Vice President's Chair, and Claudia will be Secretary. I appreciate that. Moving forward, my travel gets a little more extensive, and this community, and the board, and Mr. Toscano deserve somebody who's local, available anytime, and I, I appreciate this, this reorganization immensely. So with that, Mr. Massengill, would you please take over your meeting?
Forget your picture.
We'll move that later.
Mr. Massengill, I'd like to say also, Mr. Bryant, I've been on the board nine years, and I want to thank Mr. Bryant for his board leadership over the years. I want to thank him also for his, his knowledge of board policies. And I've learned a lot from Mr. Bryant by being on the board over these years, and I want to thank you for being President. I don't know how many years you've been President, but I want to thank you for the, the leadership that you gave to this board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm not going anywhere, okay?
No, I don't know you that.
I'm, I'm here.
As President.
And I, and I, and I want to continue to serve the community. It's been a pleasure for me to serve this board, it's been a pleasure for me to work with this board, and that's not changing. So enough said, let's, let's, thank you, appreciate that.
If y'all don't mind, I would like to take a few moments to just say a few words. Besides just wow, and see if I can compose some thoughts and not get too distracted about what's going on. But anyway, it's a rare opportunity for me, it's been presented now twice, that I get to follow in the footsteps of two great men, the first one being my father. When my father passed away, I got the opportunity with my wife and I to own and operate and run his precious business. And anybody that's, any man that's worth their salt knows who, who they rely on and cannot do and live without, and that would be my Rob and my wife and both my kids. That being said, the second opportunity is the following, the footstep of this great leader here that has been with this district for, I think, in this capacity for what, twenty-five years? Close, yeah. And you've been President for thirteen straight? Okay, if you say so. I'm, that's, I'm, I'm just guessing, but I think that's pretty close numbers, but it is an honor and privilege to, to follow in your footsteps. Also, I'd like to say, both my parents were products of the Depression, grew up in the Greatest Generation, and both of them didn't give me, my brother and I a whole lot of advice, or, you know, they weren't, they're helicopter parents as you have today. They were more like, you know, if we did something stupid, they hoped that we learned from that, and if we did something stupid again, then we were just stupid, and eventually, we would, we would learn and hopefully, you know, move on. But also, my, they didn't give us a lot of advice, but the two things that I remember both my mom and dad saying, my dad always told me, "Son, don't ever pass up an opportunity and be careful what you wish for." My mom always told me, and I think my mom was the smarter of the two, because she kind of figured out me at an early age, and, and, and she's always said, "John, you always attract more bees with honey than you do with vinegar." And I've, if y'all, any of y'all know me, I'm more on the vinegar side than the honey side. That's why this, our superintendent has nicknamed me graciously "sugar-free." But, but I, I am able, I am able to recognize greatness and, and good people. And what y'all have in front of you is seven, eight included, but seven trustees that I have full confidence and, and every faith that any one of the seven could sit here and do this job just like I'm hopefully going to do. And I am humbled, because we are a team, to, to be chosen to sit in this chair, I truly am. I've, I'm the shortest-tenured trustee sitting here, and, and I am not the dip-my-toe-in kind of person, or man. I'm either all in or all out, and, and when I started in this trek that I'm on of being a trustee, I've been blessed to be part of this, this board and this district. I was born and raised in Southside, I'm a true Southsider. I just love this community, I love this school, and- Um, um, I just love this community, I love this school, uh, and I just can't say nothing more than, "Thank y'all very much, I am honored." Believe me, I am honored to be here.
Congratulations.
In my humble, in my humble opinion, um, we are the greatest board in the state of Texas, so. That's about as much as I can say off the cuff, and.
You did a great job.
So, anyway, let's see how I can fumble, let's see how I can fumble through this and get us out of here, so. So, um.
Want sugar-free, don't let it down.
Action item, uh, agenda item B, construction project delivery contract award method, track resurfacing, East Central High School.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Trustees, um, if you would take a look in your miscellaneous packet, there is a document, one page, and it's very fine print, I apologize. Um, and it's titled ECHS Stadium Track Resurfacing, it's dated back to April. Um, this is a, a project that, uh, you're very well aware of, that we are in need of doing some work at the high school, uh, at the track, and eventually, in, in, in the very near future, the field as well. Um, we had thought back in the spring that we were going to consider, uh, taking care of that track over the summer, so at the time, in the short timeline, uh, we, we looked at purchasing cooperatives, um, as, as our avenue to procure, uh, that service of getting the track resurfaced. And so, at the time, as I mentioned earlier, when you, when you go to purchasing cooperatives, you can look at all of those and, and compare them to one another for value. And so, at the time, staff did that, and, and there were three contractors, uh, that they had compared pricing on, and the reason I'm showing you this prior to going into the detail about the item is, I just wanted to show you the roundabout, uh, ballpark price. So, there were three contractors at the time, uh, and they ranged from three hundred and forty-six thousand to three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to resurface the track. However, we've pivoted and determined that we were gonna do this track project at the end of football season, which gives us a longer window of time than we had last spring with summer approaching. And so, for that reason, um, I'm going to recommend that the board allow us to take this to market. We feel that, uh, an award-delivery method of competitive sealed proposals gives us the opportunity to make it more competitive, to determine those specifications that we want, and make sure that those, um, are compared, the pricing is compared apples to apples, and that, uh, we, we think that that'll give us the opportunity to get an even better value than, than we would've gotten this summer. And so, with that, per board policy, CB Local, prior to advertising for any construction project that's going to be valued over fifty thousand dollars, the board must, uh, approve and determine the project-delivery-contract-award method that is to be used. And so, as I mentioned before, uh, we would like, uh, the board's consideration for us to utilize competitive seals, sealed proposals. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Since we're waiting for the end of football season, we'll let interfere with track and forget how the students.
So, the timeframe on the construction project, Miss Ariola, Mr. Moore, if you're here.
It was anywhere between six to eight weeks, depending on the weather, because of what kind of the weather season.
So, that would, at the end of football season, we would be able to accommodate for soccer in the window?
I'm already moving all the discrimination off the side in case we run into any weather issues. Um, so, we shouldn't have had to, if there is, I'm already performing first, proposals that may have changed sites sometimes. If, if we were able to do this, I'm, I'm, for any weather breaks.
Okay, okay. I forget the tracks, spring.
A little later, yeah.
Can I ask?
Yeah. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Can I ask when the last time we was, if we had this done, when it was? If we had, we had this done before, once already, or this will be the first time?
So, it was, um, during.
Yeah.
So, it was re, it was resurfaced on the top, um, if you've been around the track lately, you're gonna see the chunks that are kinda missing, so they're gonna have, they're going, and they're, and they're going to scrape it all out, it's gonna be a completely new track, it's just not gonna be, uh, a resurface.
It's, it's gonna be a whole thing, okay.
So, we weren't able to hold, host any track meets, meets last year, there's two lanes that are unsafe for competition at this point.
Is this about the n- norm, five years that they offer for the, uh, warranty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How long do they normally, I guess, how long, what I expect it to be, but.
A normal track where it's a resurface, you come back and tell you that this year, you did about three to four years, and then, uh, probably you'll be striped or repainted in about five. It just depends on the weather, if what they're, the track that we're looking at is a, a gray track, and if they're gray and not that black, it'd be, um, it's, it's colored a little bit further.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Concerns? Yes, sir, yes, sir?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the construction project-delivery-contract-award method utilizing competitive sealed proposals and securing a contract for the track resurfacing at the high school as presented.
So, we have a recommendation from the superintendent for the construction project and, uh, for the track at the East Central High School, do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Do we have a motion from Mr. Vic Garza, do I have a second? Got a second from Ms. Claudia Vareintos, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item C, consider and take possible action to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm already ahead of the game here. Um, so, start right here. The Board of Trustees on September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, beginning at eight fifteen P.M., convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Governance Code Sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. So, the board ended its closed meeting at eight forty-three P.M. on September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, no action was taken, and the closed meeting. All right, so we are at, uh, action item C, consider and take possible action to approve terms of settlement, drainage, that word right? Drainage dispute with adjacent landowner.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval of the settlement of the drainage claims asserted by Joyce L. Munster on substantially the terms contained in the draft settlement agreement provided to the board. That a copy of such draft settlement agreement be appended to the official minutes of this meeting to memorialize the terms approved and authorize the superintendent to execute documents necessary to finalize the settlement, including execution of the proposed settlement agreement in substantially the same form as the one provided to the board.
Do you have any questions, concerns? No? So, we have a recommendation, uh, from the superintendent, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Mr. Vic Garza, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Del, Mr. Del Brazil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Would any of the trustees like anything pulled from the consent agenda?
No, I don't.
Uh, where we, what do we, how do we do that now? Forgot what I was supposed to say. Yes, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, we have a motion and a second.
I got it.
By unanimous dissent.
Your motion's second, then you need to take a vote.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, oh. Do we have a vote?
You have a motion by Ms. Vareintos, and you have a second by Mr. Garza.
Proved via unanimous dissent.
Okay.
So, we're good, so. Do I have motion for, oh.
Anything else?
No. Oh, D, no.
That's all part of the concept, so.
Adjournment, action item D, eight, adjournment, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
So, we have a motion and a second, we adjourn, adjournment, unanimous dissent, I can't say that word, sorry.